Good evening. My name is Nick Sturgeon, President of the Speedway Town Council. It's October 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with introductions. To my far right is Town Manager Grant Kleinheinz.
Good evening.
Next to him is Counselor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
To my far left is Town Attorney Ted Nolting.
Good evening.
Next to him is Town Court Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Next to him is our very special Counselor Vince Knoblet. We are missing Counselors Sean Harold and Vice President Jason DeWile because this is a special session of the Town Council. We had moved our regularly scheduled meeting from this coming Monday to today to get the town business done before fall break. So I will move on to item number two, motion to cancel the regularly scheduled October 13th, 2025 Town Council meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, since I'm the only one.
Any comments, questions, or discussion? None? I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve the cancellation of our meeting on October 13th, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero.
My only quick comment is, last year we actually did it right. When we put the calendar together, we looked at the high, the school. This year, for some reason, that just, and October came so quickly. Next year, we will get that correct.
Yeah, it is what it is.
Yep.
Item number three, minutes, approval of minutes of the September 22nd, 2025 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes three, zero. Item four, memorandum, approval of memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on September 22nd, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I will second it.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero. Number five, memorandum, approval of a memorandum of joint executive session of the Speedway Town Council, redevelopment commission, and the economic development commission on September 22nd, 2025.
I make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero. Item six, approval of a proposal for professional service, services from Westler Engineering for the risk resilience assessment and emergency response plans. Grant.
Yes, so this is, this is biannually required by the federal government. We have to put together an updated and renewed two-part plan, resilience reassessment and risk resilient, I'm sorry, risk resilience assessment and emergency response plans. So Westler has given us this proposal for $7,000. This will include items like access, perimeter check, equipment manufacturing, cybersecurity, access, except, all of those types of things will be looked at and included in this assessment. I think that's a really good price for what they actually will be doing for us.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I will second it.
Any comments, questions, discussions?
Grant, is that for every piece of property that we own? What's the parameters on that?
So the water department specifically, it's every water asset. So it'll be some of our pump stations, wells, those kinds of things. It won't be things like hydrants or, but they will look at if we have a major water break, water main break, what's, what's going to happen.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, sounds good.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero. Item seven, approval of quote for the purchase of body cameras for the Speedway Police Department. I believe there's a request to table this item for tonight. Can I have a motion for the table?
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving, tabling this to next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it will be tabled to the next meeting. Item eight, approval of pay requests, number two and number three to Midwest Paving, Inc. for the 25th Street reconstruction project. Grant.
Yes, so this evening, we actually have two pay requests, number two and number three. Number two is in the amount of $315,633.84. Number three is in the amount of $411.466.13. Totalling $727.99.97. This is for work covered in June and July. We're still verifying August and September, and those most likely will be on your next agenda or the first in November.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
No, I just want to make sure, Grant, you know, given the challenges that we had in July, you know, especially July, it turned out to be a wet couple of days and pushed them back from that standpoint. Where do we stand right now?
So we have added almost three weeks to their end-of-date contract through the change orders that we've approved. So we're probably looking at for substantial completion mid-December.
Okay.
With final completion being in the spring, you can't do things like grow grass in October, November, and December. So we'll have substantial completion this December. And as you know, right now, they're working on the stabilization of the base on the segment west of Moller. That has actually responded well. They're doing some undercuts and digs. They hope that by the end of the week, rock can be down, curb work can start or potentially be finished up, and then asphalt would be the next step. So we're hoping asphalt late next week or the following week. Then we can open all that road back up to traffic and allow everyone to start using their driveway until they start tearing up individual driveways, which they will, they'll have to do three or four at a time, pour them, and then those folks will have to park in other locations.
Right.
It's a very difficult road. There's no way to access those properties. There's about 30 properties that are affected. But in general, we have gotten them close to being back on schedule. I think weather and some of the issues with the base has really put us a little behind.
Well, I think that was, that's the critical point to make, is the fact that, you know, until we did a roll test on an exposed roadway.
Yeah.
And then there's just no telling than, you know, what, what's underneath of it.
Yeah.
And I think this by far will be the longest, you know, or the best improvement based on, and making sure that that passes the second roll test.
The reason the road was in the condition that it was in was because the base wasn't necessarily fully compacted well, proof rolled and done 100% properly. There were reasons for that. That was almost 12 years ago, give or take.
Yeah.
So we, we think this extra effort and some of the extra expense that we've incurred will ensure that that road is solid.
I know that the public is, is went through a lot of pain and suffering, trying, you know, getting people in and out, trying to get, you know, their kids to school, groceries, everything else going on.
Yeah.
And it is difficult, and I totally understand that. But I, I think in the long run, this will make a lot better road for the whole town.
Yeah, my guess in December, once it's all done, people will be like, oh, what was wrong? What was the issue? You know, they'll look at the road and be happy with it, and it'll be a big improvement that we shouldn't have to do for another 15 to 20 years.
Yeah.
Frankly, it needed it. I mean, the condition of it, it was a safety hazard.
Yeah, the, the shopping center, I think, is pretty happy because of the amount of traffic going through the shopping center.
We diverted through there. We did, I don't know if you guys realize, we did get that, that arrow turned off. So that has helped traffic flow through the area. We've also increased patrols, particularly during the rush hour, morning rush hour and afternoon, evening. Police has been up there. They put out the speed box. We generate, you'll notice there's no item on the agenda to do anything else because we believe what is going on is working. Now, we had an ambulance up there, and I want to make that clear, that was not a child or anyone else struck by a car. A child slipped on sidewalk. It was wet. They were doing kid things, and they fell down. So I know that was a big point of conversation around the community over the past three days, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Grant, sorry, one last thing. Have we made any changes with, obviously, the detour that people are taking through Meadowwood Park? Are we working on parking, maybe just on the one side? I know we've had.
We looked in it. We looked at it. We discussed it with the police department. We discussed it with streets. We even called Indigo to see if they could get their buses off. We, we have monitored it, and we believe what we are doing will work without requiring people not to park on either the entire street or one side of the street. So we think we're going to hold pat.
Okay.
And we think it will be fine.
Given that there may be only about another week and a half to two weeks.
I'm thinking two weeks at the most. Yeah.
Okay.
The reality of telling people, oh, you can't park on the street, it's not easy, right? You got to put the signs up. Usually have to give about 48 hours, and then it's just an adjustment. So we all discussed it, and we felt like the problem should be taken care of here in the next couple of weeks. Now, we could get gully washers and tons of rain, and that might take three weeks or four weeks, but construction's never easy.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Grant.
Yep.
Anything else? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero. Item nine, approval of pay requests, number one and number two from Oakl Incorporated for the Crawfordville Road pedestrian improvement project. Grant.
Yes, so these are our first two, representing June and July as well. Number one was in the amount of $350,485.48. Pay request number two is 857-363-8222, for a total of $1,207,822.30. So we recommend approval of both of these pay requests.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve as submitted.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion?
No, other than that, it's looking great. I mean, those guys are doing a very good job, and they seem to clean up and keep the traffic moving. It's very difficult going down to one lane, but it's, again, a temporary basis, but it looks like the finished product's going to be great.
Yeah, they're, they're getting close to finishing the medians. There's still a little bit of work left, but then those lanes should be able to be opened back up.
Do you know when the traffic light's going to go up?
They're projecting at this point, I think, the first week of November.
Okay.
Give or take.
So what's the timeline for the?
That one is around Thanksgiving. That should be all completed and wrapped up.
Well, as far as the, the lane being reopened.
Oh, I, I asked the other day, and we think it's about one to two weeks. Yeah. I wish it was quicker, but it is what it is.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero. Item 10, ordinance number 1417, and ordinance approving the issuance and sale of special taxing district bonds by the town for the, for and on behalf of the Park and Recreation District of the town to provide for the financing of certain improvements to park facilities and to declare official intent to reimburse on our, this is a first reading, so. That was a mouthful. Philip?
Yeah, so we're about maybe 40% of the way through the process on issuing these bonds. The Parks Board had their first meeting approving a preliminary resolution back in September, and then in a few days, they will have their second meeting approving another resolu, well, another set of resolutions. And then we will do second reading ideally at the end of this month. And from there, our advisors will be working with the bond bank to get a closing dates settled.
I think we believe mid-December is probably when we'll close, correct? If things continue to go well, and we don't have any snafus, December.
So there's nothing to vote on at this point, I don't believe. It's just a.
No public hearing on this one, then? Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
I guess just my only question with the parks is, at what point will there be drawings or kind of knowing what the park could look like, or how does that, where are we in that process? That's about four to six months, I thought?
I think it'll be earlier than that.
Okay.
So Kizer Consulting Group was hired at our last meeting, and I think that they're hoping to have documents for bid either end of December, beginning of January.
First of January.
Okay.
So then we would get the results back from different companies.
And what day?
And now, as far as what the, how detailed the diagrams will be of that process versus later, I guess I don't have a good understanding of that, but.
We, we can ask that.
Yeah.
We can get that information to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I know they've been working on that since we approved the agreement a couple of weeks ago. They've given us the cost estimates that have been reviewed, and that'll be part of the public record when the Parks Board reviews that information in a week or two. So we're making progress.
Okay. All right, moving on. Approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Do have requests for both this evening. Claims are for, I'm sorry, both claims and adjustments are for the period of September 18th through October 6th of this year. Claims are on 14 pages and total $1,643,476.46. And then I do have adjustment requests for five customers on three pages for you.
I'll make a motion for the approval of claims and utility adjustments as submitted.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes three, zero. All right, moving on to department head reports. Cheryl with Communications.
Good evening, Council. Just a couple of things. The last few days, I rolled out two fun programs, one for businesses, one for residents. The third annual scarecrow competition among the businesses. I debated having it, but I had lots of inquiries this year, so we rolled that out, along with a new win Speedway Spooktacular. Residents can decorate their homes, submit a form that I have set up, and we'll, we'll judge those as well. All that information is on the town website and the Facebook page. And then Speedway Trick or Treat Night is Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. That's it.
Any questions for Cheryl?
Thank you, Cheryl, for doing that.
Next up, Economic Development. Carl?
Evening, Council. Roundabout's been going well. We are still about a week off schedule, but really not too worried about that. It's all work that can be made up. Really, it's just, we're getting ready to get landscaping and all that out there, so it'll look a lot more like a roundabout instead of a construction site here before too long. And then we are finishing up on approving the sealant and the limestone veneer and cap that will be going around most of the roundabout, finishing up getting those approvals, and so we'll start getting a lot of that in, and the masons and all them will be out there before too long, finishing up that portion of the roundabout. The IMPO Street Study Grant we got for 16th Street, that's going to be released early November. It's a little later than what I originally wanted to do, but just with the processes and everything, and make sure the RFP was correct. It got pushed a little back further, but really not a problem. We should have a contractor in January, get them started, I'm hoping mid-January, early February, and we're still going to have the study completed by end of September. Critical to get it done by end of September because we are then going to turn around with that study and try and get funded through the IMPO for construction infrastructure. And that would usually take a couple of years before you can get funded, but this is the critical first step in being able to get that, get those funds. We've got the one appraisal back for the 16th and Mickley site. We're still waiting on the other one to get the average of the two for our RFP. We are engaged with a survey contractor as well, so they'll go out and stake the site for us. Then we just know exactly where our boundaries are, and then we can start working to get some of that cleaned up back there. I'm working with Barnes and Thornburg for a TIF restatement. Basically, these are done, when you get new TIFs, you got to basically restate what this TIF is, what it's doing, things like that. So we're going through that process now. We hope to bring that to you before the end of the year, just to vote and finalize. Nothing too much. I'll get more details and get that to you once we really start hearing back more from Barnes and Thornburg on what we need to do. And then last, I got Main Street Design and Construction still going well. I'll be reaching out to Kizer and set a meeting so that we can get that going. No delays or anything, but we're probably right around 25 or 30% of the design.
Any questions for Kyle?
Yeah, I got a question for you, Kyle. Have you got the images for the roundabout yet?
Yes, we, thank you for reminding me. We did get the images from IMS. We're still waiting to get approval through REA and our other contractors on if those images will work. Perforated metal like that, it's, what's, I guess, lack of a better word, finicky. If you get a lot of background with like the crowd or something, you really can't get that detail into it. So it really has to be like straight on, looking down the straightaways on cars, things like that. But I, we got images back. I think a lot of them are going to work, and I think it's going to look really nice.
Nice, great.
All right. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Kyle.
Next up, Police. Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, Council. We will be swearing in our newest officer, Sean Whitton, on August the 24th. You're all invited. Be 9:30 in the morning. Sean is a veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps and think he's going to be a welcome addition to the, to the Police Department. Sean does not have the academy, so we already have him scheduled for the academy starting in January. From the day he's sworn in, we'll start the FTO program and get him going on road school and the 40-hour pre-basic. But we look forward to starting Sean. Along the same note, we'd like to congratulate Lieutenant James Tealy on his retirement last Thursday. Jim was 25 years to the day, so he started on October the 2nd and left on October the 2nd. I think he had that planned in there somewhere. So, but we just wish Jim the best, and, and I think he has already started living the retired life. So I think Jim is very happy. So I'll also just notify you that our calls for service so far this year are 19,954, and we have issued 4,630 citations so far. And that's all I have.
Yeah.
No, it was a good turnout for Jim's retirement party.
It was, yes.
I'd say, when I was going through the reserve process with the department, he did my background, so got to know him pretty well. So I hate to see him go, but I know he's.
We will miss Jim.
Yep.
So, thank you very much.
No, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Fire with Chief Milhorne.
All right, good evening. I'll keep it brief. We do have start, two starting recruit school on Monday. That will be, we'll get one of them back first of January. The other one still has to go through EMT schools. We will get him back until probably mid-March, mid to late March. We are getting back one of our injured guys next week, and then our guy that's in the military is coming back in about three weeks. So we're, we're starting to slowly get fully staffed again. We, this month is fire prevention month. We, by the end of the month, will be through all the schools. So our guys really enjoy doing that. So it's, it's good for all of us. And finally, run totals for the month of September were 293 total, and we're at 2,802 for the year. And that's it, unless you guys have anything for me?
Any questions?
Yeah, I got, do you guys, you know, go through the apartments in far as this fire prevention week and kind of review what, you know, the conditions are within?
That's more of an inspection.
Right.
Level, and you're only allowed to do the common, common areas. You're not allowed to enter.
Just the entryways, right. I was just wondering if they checked for, they have fire extinguisher in each?
They are supposed to, yes.
Prevention way? Okay.
Yeah, I know our inspector goes through a lot of them. So, but yeah, yeah, they're supposed to.
All right.
So, okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next up, Parks and Recreation. Tammy?
Good evening.
All right.
First off, the, we have the position for the part-time Parks Assistant open. So if anyone's interested, they can look on the town's website for the detailed information about that. And then I also wanted to remind everybody, we've got trunk or treat coming up on Saturday, October 25th. That's from 5:00 to 6:15. There is an event page out on the Facebook page, the Parks and Recreation Facebook page. And I'm excited to announce that we have an additional event that's going to be happening after trunk or treat. We just finalized it today. It will be presented by Speedway Athletics and sponsored by Speedway Parks, and we will be showing the movie Hocus Pocus on the new video screen at the football stadium. The movie will start at 7:00 PM with gates opening up at 6:00 PM. And you will not be allowed to bring your own food and beverage in, but concessions will be open, and that will support the athletic department. It is a free movie, but we will, Parks will be out there with the donation jar. If anybody is interested in donating to Parks, we would appreciate it, but not expect it. And that's all I have today.
Any questions for Tammy?
That's exciting. No, I love that idea, Tammy.
Yep.
Great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Last and certainly not least, Public Works with Ronnie Smith.
Good evening all. We'll start with the Water Department. The Water Department, the water plants treated 62 million gallons of water for the month of September. The distribution crew changed out 110 water meters. Let's move on to the Street Department. The Street Department is in the process of cleaning sanitary sewers, along with street sweeping and yard waste. Road projects ongoing at 25th Street and Crawfordville Road. Next, we'll move on to the wastewater. Wastewater Department, our plant, treated 105 million gallons of water, our wastewater for September. The energy savings project is still ongoing and on schedule. The manhole line. The manhole lining project is almost complete, except for Allison Avenue, and they will be doing that next week, and that's all I have.
Any questions for her?
Yeah, were you able to replace or inspect the water lines under Twenty-Fifth Street while we had the road open there? Or do you know?
We.
Most of the lines are not under the street. They're in the right of way. Yep.
Okay.
We did some, as far as the meter pits, we checked the meter pits and the risers and lids and stuff of that nature, so.
Great. And do we have a water tower scheduled to be painted this year, or?
It's in the budget, not, not this year, next year, twenty-twenty-six.
Yes, okay, sounds good.
Inspected, painted.
Which one is it?
Sixteenth Street, right.
Sixteenth Street?
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Ronnie. All right, Town Manager Report. Grant.
Just a couple of quick items. I was over at the B and O ribbon, I guess we call that a ribbon cutting. They cut a ribbon three times. They cut a ribbon. Great to see, there were probably a hundred and twenty people there. Beautiful day for it, but it's a great thing now that we literally have that trail from downtown Indianapolis all the way out to the west side of Hendricks County. The plan is ultimately to get it out to Crawfordville, which is, would be a total of sixty-two miles. There's a lot of work and probably a couple of decades that will require, but it's, it's a great asset. So glad that the B and O Trail Association in Hendricks County and Speedway Trails worked so hard to get that. And I think when they started in nineteen ninety, somebody said today, they had no idea how they were going to get that done. And that, really great to see them get that, so a great asset. The, the other thing that I wanted to mention, I will be on fall break next week. I will be appointing Chief Fishburne, kind of as the acting town manager. He'll communicate with me when we have any issue, but he'll be the one that will deal with any day-to-day stuff that comes up, so. That's all I've got.
All right, any questions for Grant?
No.
All right, moving on to Councilor Reports. Sarah.
Yeah, just a few items. Wanted to just thank all the participants at the Hometown Parade. I know a lot of you guys were in it, and businesses and different sports and things like that, so just thank you to the ladies who put that on. I know Gina, Lane and Christina have to work tirelessly to get that together. So I think that was a great turnout again this year. The weather was amazing, unlike last year, so hopefully that continues. I think that's a great event leading into homecoming and something really fun that the kids look forward to. And yeah, just to piggyback off of Grant, fall break is next week, so all week long, the kids are out of school. So again, just being aware that kids on bikes and all the things and zipping around town, that, just, just to be aware that there'll be more kiddos out. And then, of course, I have to celebrate my ten-year softball team, second place, so we got some rings, and that was really fun. So again, just thanks to, just the collaboration between Parks and the town and volunteer coaches and different communities. Brownsburg works with Speedway very well with softball, and it's just really cool to see the girls get better from last place in the spring to second place in the fall. So yeah, just a lot of fun with that, so that's all I had tonight.
Thanks, Sarah. Vince?
I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
All right, and as Sarah mentioned, it's fall break next week, so those of you traveling, safe travels. And it is six thirty-two, and I will call this meeting adjourned.